All right, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the South Burlington School Board, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag is right over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag-
And to the United States of America-
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all-
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. I'm delighted that this is my first chance to chair a meeting as an acting chair. So, we're at comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda. And I understand that most of the people here have come to the meeting because of the current work stoppage. And we will take comments from the audience in a moment, but first, I want to provide a statement on behalf of the board. Now, how we arrived at this point bears repeating. When the board started the negotiation process in December 2013, it was facing a budget increase for a second year of approximately 7 percent. Going into the negotiations, though, we had a number of goals. We wanted to look for ways to contain costs. We wanted to improve teachers' overall compensation. We wanted to continue to pay our teachers a premium amount over the average salary in Chittenden County. And we also wanted to shift some of the salary we were willing to put onto the table to the less experienced teachers. We identified, after much work, health insurance as an area where we could meet some of these goals. After thorough research, we proposed a health care option that would have saved the district money and would put more money into the teachers' pockets because of reduced payments on premium, and it would have provided equivalent coverage. Now, earlier this year, we had several meetings with the association's negotiating team, finding that we were not making progress. We did have a mediation session in June. No resolution was reached there, so we went into a process called fact-finding. And in fact, finding each side presented its position or positions to a neutral fact-finder. This neutral fact-finder issued a report on July 22 of this past summer. On August 20, we had our first discussion after the fact-finding report had been issued with the association. It was a short discussion, as the association was unwilling to discuss further with us our questions, our issues, our proposals regarding health care. When school started, the teachers continued to work under the terms of the expired contract. That meant that they were being paid, that the eligible teachers were getting their step increases, and that they retained their premium insurance. Last Monday, October 6, was the first time that the sides met since that brief August meeting. At that meeting, the association provided us with a counterproposal, and it was the first counterproposal we had seen since early June. The board caressed and considered the counterproposal and determined that it needed more time than just that evening to look carefully at constructing a response. The board told the association that we heard their concerns and would give them a counterproposal later in the week as soon as possible. And the board continued to work that evening to try to develop that response, and the board worked the next morning to develop that response. Actually, two committee members dead. And on Thursday evening, we finalized it after three additional hours. We spent significant time making sure that we were crafting a very good response. We provided that response on Friday, but backing up first, on the Tuesday, we did let the association know that we were going to provide a response by Friday, and they did go ahead and they had a strike vote setting yesterday as the strike date. This past Friday, the counterproposal that we provided addressed what we understood the primary concern to be that led to the strike vote, and that was the option to continue with the health insurance. And we preserved the option to continue with the current health insurance in that plan, in that proposal. Now, we did ask for some concessions because that health care proposal would come with significant additional costs to the taxpayer. That's why we had been trying to find a health care proposal that would save some money, but this one was going to provide or require additional costs, so we asked for some concessions. We asked for a reduced increase in salary. We asked for an increase in the contribution to the premium, and we also asked that money, some of the funds that we were willing to put on the table, would be shifted to the younger, less experienced teachers. We did receive a response from the association on Sunday, and as we have said before, we believe that it offered no serious concessions. This community has elected five board members to oversee its interests related to the school district. One of the most important responsibilities that the board has is to negotiate work conditions and compensation for teachers with the association. We do so as an entire cohesive board, with better decisions coming out of the interplay of the different perspectives and different experiences of the five board members. We believe it would have been, would be, a disservice to the community, and indeed, it would be negligence if the board were to make such important decisions as we have facing us without those perspectives and experiences of those board members. We made this very clear to the association last Friday when we provided the counterproposal that addressed what we understood to be their primary concern, and that is when we also told them we could not meet without the entire board until tomorrow, and we do have a session set up for tomorrow at 2:00. Nevertheless, the association decided to proceed with the strike. Now, the South Burlington School Board has the responsibility to provide quality public education at a cost the community can afford. We have the responsibility to balance numerous different interests and viewpoints in trying to oversee the school district. We will continue to do so in trying to come to a fair and reasonable settlement, and we will look forward to trying to resolve this tomorrow afternoon when we sit down with the association. Now, we know and appreciate that emotions in the community are running high. We have circulated a sign-up sheet, and we can actually, if you just take the top one off, and we can circulate it again in case anybody else does want to speak. Because there's not that many people, I think, that have signed up, we were going to put a two-minute limit or try to have people speak for only two minutes. If the sign-up sheet grows significantly, we may have to do that. So, please, if somebody has commented before you and has made the same comment that you want to make for purposes of getting through the comments and getting through the evening, we would want you to consider passing your turn. Now, this is not a session to bash our teachers, to bash the volunteer school board members either. We want the discussion, the comments, to be respectful, and we're going to start with students who, I understand, do have comments, so.
So, Sarah Fisher?
Good evening. My name is Sarah Fisher, and I'm a senior here at South Burlington High School. I'm here today on behalf of South Burlington High School student athletes. We are profoundly disappointed with the strike and its ramifications. We believe that it is in the best interest of not only our school, but also our community to reinstate South Burlington High School athletics immediately. These circumstances are unfortunate for all of us, but even more so for our graduating seniors. On our fall sports teams, there are a total of 64 seniors. Due to the strike, some of our seniors have already missed the opportunity to participate in their respective senior games, the celebration of their contributions to South Burlington High School over the last four years. It's not just about their senior games, but about every last minute they get to spend on the field. Shorting these seniors the chance to complete their final seasons would be a travesty. Fall sports teams have been preparing since mid-August for the chance to capture their respective state titles. Playoffs begin on Monday. Today is Wednesday. That is five days away. In order to provide our athletes with the best possible chance to succeed in the playoffs, teams need to be back on the South Burlington facilities tomorrow morning. There are over 100 championship banners lining the walls of our high school gym, and we feel that it is in our duty as South Burlington athletes to do everything in our power to continue to build this proud tradition. Therefore, with or without resolution to the teacher's strike, we ask that the board and superintendent reinstate the fall sports seasons effective immediately. Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney?
I'm over here. My name is Morris Mahoney. I'm a South Burlington resident, and as you need to know, I've been teaching here for over 30 years, and I liked it so much I couldn't leave. I continue to sub at the high school on a regular basis. I'm very proud to be associated with all of the students, the teachers, the administrators in this school district. It's a very, very special school district. People don't move to South Burlington to be closer to Al's French Fries. They move here because of the schools, and they stay here because of the schools, generation after generation. I've been aware of, over the years, talk about the high salaries of the South Burlington school teachers. That is a direct result of past, and I think wise, board decisions from the past, who determined to pay people based on their skills, on their degrees, on their time here, and always encouraged people to get higher degrees. We don't have a lot of turnover in the system at South Burlington. There's very good reason for that. It's a great place to be. Historically, I know people sometimes fain concern over property taxes, but they forget that in Vermont, we have property tax rebates, and so no one who is income, a lower income or many middle-income people are going to be suffering. As a matter of fact, the rebate would probably cover any increase that most people in South Burlington might engender, and I don't know if that's even going to be very large. As a matter of fact, I'd love to see the school board and the South Burlington Educators Association in a collaborative effort to make sure no one in this community goes unaware of the rebate in the homestead system. Historically, South Burlington has avoided teacher strikes, and that's because school board members, to a large extent, superintendents to a large extent, with histories like Ted Manassar and Fred Tuttle, were able to get together and come together and get things settled before the community became deeply divided, because they always knew what was at stake. And what's at stake is this community. After more than 50 years of goodwill between the school boards and teachers, that goodwill is being threatened. Historically, we've always had union-busting members. I remember some back in the '80s and the '90s. But historically, those board members were overridden by the wiser sentiments of the majority of the board. And so, I ask you, do not, please, do not trifle with these teachers, these students, this community. Please respect this history and do not trifle with it. Settle this.
My name is Sarah Weber. I've been a resident here for 23 years. I've had four children go through the South Burlington School District. They've been continuously enrolled for 22 years. I'd like everybody to travel back two weeks and think about how you would answer the question, "Do you like South Burlington schools?" And I'd be willing to bet every single one of you would say, "I like the South Burlington schools, and I think the teachers are fantastic." Those teachers are the same people today as they were two weeks ago, and I just can't wait for their skilled and caring people to get back in the classroom with our students. By definition, negotiations are two parties who don't agree about something. If they agreed, you wouldn't need a negotiation. There's always back and forth. Some negotiations are easy, some negotiations are hard. I don't know how many of you remember the extended strikes that happened in Queensburg in the late '80s and in Colchester in, I can't remember how long, more recently. Those strikes damaged the community significantly. It took years for those places to recover, and I would say, in some cases, the schools haven't recovered. I think what our community will look like after this strike will depend more on how we get through this than what the dollars and cents settlement is, because the emotions is what we will remember. Do we get through this with emotionally-laden arguments or a respectful consideration of both of the facts, step by step along the way? I know this is asking for extraordinary leadership on everybody in this room's part, on the board's part, on the teachers' part, but I ask you, please, resist that overwhelming temptation to teach personally, to use emotional language, so that our community emerges at the other side as whole as possible.
Ms. Dowmore? Right here? Just a little. Good evening. I'm Lori Dowmore, and I've been teaching at South Burlington High School in the World Language Department for 25 years. I am proud to be a teacher in this district, and I'm honored to have the best job in the world that is focused on letting students reach their full potential. In my 34 years of teaching in public schools, I have never been on strike. I don't want to be on strike. I want to be in my classroom, but for most of the year, you have not really engaged in any meaningful negotiations with my colleagues. And in recent days, you have told the public that you value us, that you are proud of the job that we do, and want to maintain the excellence that we all expect of each other and in our schools. Despite this, the educators of the South Burlington District continue to build a strong and proud tradition. Those are admirable words, but what is needed is for you to get back to the negotiating table for work, really work with my colleagues until an agreement is reached. We would not be on strike if you had used the time last week to reach a settlement. We would not be on strike if you listened to the recommendations of the neutral fact-finder. We would not be on strike if you had come prepared to work until the job is finished. We know how disruptive this strike is, and believe me, this was not the outcome that any of us wanted. I want, as a proud teacher of this district, for you to get back to, for us to get back to work, and for us all to reach a fair settlement.
I'm Chris Kenneland. This is my 24th year in the district, and I would like to take a moment to focus on the recent achievements of South Burlington students. These figures come from the annual report, which is available on the SPSD website. We're all aware that standardized test scores are not the only method for assessing student achievement, but they do allow comparisons. This is what I found. Based on the most recent reported NECA results, the numbers represent the percentage of our students performing at or above standard in reading grades 3 to 8, 81 percent of our students compared to a state result of 70. In grade 11, 89 percent of our students compared to a 74 percent rate for the state. In writing grades 5 and 8, 66 percent compared to 54 percent for the state. In grade 11, 79 percent compared to 54 percent for the state. In math grades 3 through 8, 78 percent compared to state result of 54 percent. Grade 11, 79, excuse me, 57 percent compared to 35. Did I say math? I teach math. Did I say math grades 3 through 8? In science, grade 4, 62 percent versus 48 percent. In grade 8, 60 percent versus 33 percent for the state. In grade 11, 54 percent versus 32 percent. Our SAT and ACT scores are higher than state averages. State averages are higher than national averages. 194 of our students took 393 AP tests in 2013. We have a 93 percent graduation rate. Students graduating in 2013 went to colleges that included Amherst, Brown, Columbia, Cornell, Harvard, Middlebury, Mount Holyoke, Princeton, Smith, Toff's, Wellesley, Williams, and Yale. I compared our results to those of Chittenden South, one of our nearest neighbors, and found them comparable. The difference is that Chittenden South recently and amicably reached a settlement agreement, one that is in line with our fact-finder's recommendations for a fair and reasonable contract. I reviewed reports about the connection between the role of the teacher and student improvement and achievement. What I found was that the year-long and cumulative effects of having a talented teacher are measurable and substantial. South Burlington needs to be able to attract and keep talented teachers. My question is, can you afford not to be competitive with our surrounding districts? Is a good enough contract good enough? We're proud of what we do. We're proud of what we have achieved. We're constantly striving to do it better, and we'd like to get back to it.
I'm right here. I am Jody Smith. I've taught at Rick Markout Center School for 30 years. But not only that, I was born and raised in South Burlington. My own children are fourth-generation South Burlingtonians and are successful young adults thanks to my phenomenal colleagues in the South Burlington School District. I love working here and am proud to work alongside so many wonderful colleagues who are dedicated to keeping South Burlington schools one of the best in the state. My colleagues and I are not where we want to be. We want to be in our classrooms, teaching our students, inspiring thinkers. We want to mentor, plan lessons, coach our teams, and work together. In short, we want this contract dispute to be over. South Burlington is an outstanding school district where teachers want to work. We enjoy a very supportive community, engaged parents, and caring, thoughtful children who have come to expect an excellent public education. It's truly a rewarding place to spend a professional teaching career. We hope that when you sit down tomorrow afternoon with our team, that you stay at the table until a tentative agreement is reached. I know our team will stay until the job is done, and then we can all get back to doing what we want to do, and that's teach.
Before I introduce myself and read my statement, I'd like to express appreciation on behalf of the teachers. I know and I trust the school board, parents, and community that we value students here at this meeting tonight. We hear your voice and understand your concerns, so thank you. My name is Dean Moline, and I'm a proud educator at Chamberlain School. I have worked for this incredible district with amazing students and families and professional colleagues for over 17 years. I would like the board to understand that being an educator is not what I do, it is who I am. I am a proud educator in South Burlington. I would like to ask the board, when they meet with teachers tomorrow, to take every opportunity to settle in fairness. Too much time has passed, and so much has been missed. We do not want to be the only teachers in the county without a contract. We do not want our school board to be the only school board in the county without a negotiated agreement with their teachers. We have been ready and will continue to be ready to negotiate with the board at every opportunity. We have to believe that we can accomplish this important task before us. We have to find the strength and the courage to make this happen. We need the school board to be at the table with us tomorrow with a willingness to accomplish a fair agreement, no matter how long it takes. We are proud teachers who work with the very best students in the state of Vermont. I know that this strike is painful. It is painful for me. I know that this is not where we want to be. The teachers of South Burlington want to be in the classroom with their students. We ask the board not to delay and to come to the table ready to negotiate and ready to get the job done. Don't think for a moment that this has not brought heartache. We want to be with our students as they learn new things about the academic world around them. We want to once again celebrate every athletic achievement on the field of play. I ask that we all find the strength and the courage to settle in fairness. South Burlington teachers want to be in the classroom with our students. Thank you.
Mr. Quaillen?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Charlie Quaillen, and I am very proud to be a parent, and I'm very proud to be a teacher. And the thing about these two jobs is I can't quit either of them. And we've talked before about teaching is not what we do, it's who we are, and they both mean the same to me. They are what I am. And just as if somebody came to me and said, "Sure, you don't have to be a dad to these girls anymore. You don't have to get yelled at at the dinner table. You put your feet up, have your afternoons, have your weekends back." That would sound great, right? We have the same feeling. These people here not being in the classroom with our students, it kills us. When we say we want to be in the classroom, we need to be in the classroom. And so, when you come to a meeting and you are unprepared to negotiate, and you take time, and you are unprepared to meet, it frustrates me, it confuses me, and angers me. So, when we meet tomorrow, please, all I ask, I'm not asking for this, that, specific number, but I ask that you come prepared, and I ask that tomorrow, when we meet, that we take the time and the diligence and the preparation, whatever's required, so that we are done tomorrow. Thank you.
Mrs. Mackler?
I would like to thank the school board for your commitment to serving our South Burlington community. I know that you're volunteers that have jobs, families, and many other responsibilities. I understand that you have the very impossible job of balancing the needs of students, teachers, and taxpayers. There are very few people in this community that are willing to take on the roles and responsibilities that you have all taken on. And it's sad and unfortunate that while traveling- And it's sad and unfortunate that while trying to serve our community, you are now individually faced with an unfair labor practices charge. I appreciate the time and effort that you've put into serving our community on the school board, and I know that many other people feel the same way.
Hello, my name is Amelia Lutz, and I am proud to have been a teacher at Frederick Beach Title Middle School for the last 12 years. I'm also proud to be teaching in this school district, and I'm inspired and humbled every day by the actions of my colleagues and their efforts to support kids. We want to be in school, we want to work with kids, we want you to sit down and come to a fair settlement, please.
For those who don't know me, my name is Tim Wile, and stealing a line from Patrick Burke, I am proud to be the director of guidance at South Burlington High School. That being said, I want to be crystal clear that I speak here tonight on behalf of no one but myself. Hello, Dan. Hello, Julie. Hello, Diane. Hello, Martin. As I thought I would be, I am reminded, as I look at you, of the caring individuals I know you to be, which I'm a little embarrassed to tell you is not always how I have thought of you these last days that have recently passed. And this duality of my thinking has led me to think a lot about relationships. Now, I expect there are some of you who would want to sweetly pat me on the head for my naivete and missing the point about what brings us here. And I would tell you, I think this is the point, relationships. This is, after all, the business we are in, for it is the quality of relationships that is the underpinning of all learning environments. Students consistently report it is the relationship with teachers that engages them in learning. In my counseling office, it is the capacity of our staff with parents and students at ease that lead to the first-time telling of incredible stories and the opportunities to seek support and make change. It is the relationship with administration that allowed us to weather a difficult loss of a colleague and inspired so many to step up when one of those administrators needed to step away for a time. Through all of these difficulties, we have kept students and families our first priority, and I believe they have shown us their appreciation in return. And yet somehow, we have now lost our way. We can continue our blaming of each side, as I think smart people can do, or we can focus on the task at hand, which is putting families and relationships back in our focus. The issues before us are not unique, and somehow all the surrounding towns have managed them in a timely manner without this contention. And quite frankly, I think we have some learning to do from them. I hope both sides will give some consideration to investing money not in lawyers or strike headquarters, but in hiring someone skilled in creating a more positive negotiating environment and process. And that is for later. For now, what I am hoping for is that both sides come to the process tomorrow with whatever they need to bring it to a conclusion. I do not know if this is an accountant, a mediator, a whole lot of pizza and chocolate with just a commitment. I do know that without that commitment, to stick with it until this is resolved, we are failing in our relationships to our kids and our families. You might see this as a self-centered plea out of concern for walking, although my physician might tell you that a few more days of walking might not be a bad thing for me. But let me be clear again. My call is for all of us to muddle that we can work through any issue in a collaborative way, that we can be respectful of differences, and that we can still come to an agreement. I invite everyone here to commit to getting our kids back to school.
I apologize, I can't, I'm not sure about this name. Michelle Rutt?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't write that name. I'm Michelle Rosowski. Thank you for giving the public an opportunity to speak at this meeting. I'm the parent of two children at Rick Marcott Central School. I have always been a big fan of teachers. I don't need to be sold on the value they bring. I think teachers are amazing. I could never manage 26 kids, much less teach them anything. So I am a huge fan. But as of last week, I'm totally disillusioned. Shutting children out of school and wreaking havoc on families across South Burlington is the wrong way to go. It's abominable, and it should be illegal. Before this week, if I, as a community member, had heard that teachers had a legitimate complaint about their work conditions, I would have said, how can I support you? But going on strike affected the wrong people. This going on strike to publicize your complaints was a bad move because now I'm angry, and I know I'm not the only one. We're angry, and we're really angry. My children spent the day teaching each other math on KhanAcademy.org and sitting in my office playing Minecraft while I worked. I've been scrambling for childcare, leaving work early to relieve the babysitter, and helping friends out by having six children in my home. And that's just me. I feel bad for the people of South Burlington who can't afford a babysitter. I feel bad for the scholars and the athletes who are trying to get scholarships in college. I feel bad for the seniors who are trying to take their exams and get into colleges. It punishes the wrong people. If I were talking to my children, I would say, you owe, all of you owe us an apology for the stress this has brought us this week. It damages the community, and I want to echo what was said earlier. There's damage to this community. Even if this and when this is resolved, I won't be able to face my children's teachers the same way. With or without resolution, we have to go back to school, and it has to be next week. Thank you.
Glenn Brunns, Butler Drive. I'm the parent of two students in the district here. I approached the board this evening because I'm deeply concerned for the common good of our community. I realize that I'm only one small voice, but as Margaret Mead said, never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. First, I'd like to be clear that I'm a staunch supporter of public education. I served on the school committee in my former town in Massachusetts, and since my family and I have moved here in 2011, I have supported every single school budget. We chose to live in South Burlington, as many of you have as well, for the schools, and my husband and I are actively engaged in our children's education. We consistently volunteer in the elementary and middle school. We generally lend support to individual teachers in classrooms and the schools whenever possible. The South Burlington community is an incredibly supportive community of its schools. The statistics speak for themselves. With such a supportive community behind it, I am stunned that the SBEA has chosen to strike. While I understand and respect that we are working within the structural framework of collective bargaining and that the state of Vermont, public employees have the right to strike, that does not mean they have the right to invoke that. A strike is a divisive, antiquated, bullying tactic that only fosters ill will. The SBEA had an opportunity to choose a different path and continue negotiations without using the children and families of this community as their hawns. Lower salary increases or zero increases and higher contributions toward health care benefits are a part of life as we know it today. This is not a South Burlington issue. It is not a Vermont issue. It's a national problem. Everyone across the country has been asked to pick up a portion of rising costs of health care. It doesn't seem reasonable that teachers should be exempt from this burden and that the rest of the community is already carrying. Picking up costs for teachers through additional tax increases is the same as asking the entire community to cover health care increases twice so that teachers don't have to. As a society, we need to consider the collective good and continue moving on a path forward, leading with positive change, or there will no longer be programs for our students and teachers in our classrooms. Vermont leads on issues of national and global importance. I am so proud to live in Vermont and proud of the pioneering spirit of the great little state that could. Can South Burlington be the great little city that could? Let's lead the way. Staying the current course will erode public education. This is not a sustainable model for quality public education and a healthy community.
Hello, my name is Eric Stone. I've been teaching in South Burlington School District for 17 years. And at the risk of going too far afield, Mr. Chairman, and going down the road of possibly being thought of as negotiating in public, which I don't think serves anybody any good, I would remind the board, and I would remind you all, that there is a Fact Finder report which does take into consideration all of the needs of all the people in South Burlington. We have committed to using that as a framework because it is reasoned, well thought out, and neutral. I want to say that I have heard the students here who have so eloquently voiced their opinion that they would like to get back on the athletic field. I'm here today to say that we, of course, are interested in doing just that. And in fact, we are not just interested in getting athletes back on the field, we are interested in getting students into the classroom. With that being said, I feel tremendous pressure. I feel the responsibility of so many children, so many parents, so many teachers who want a reasonable, fair settlement. And thus, I pledge to the students who sit here, to the parents who are here, to the teachers who have so courageously shown that they want a fair and reasonable settlement, that tomorrow, we will be there until it's done. If this doesn't work tomorrow, it will be because you have walked away. Thank you.
So as many people have said, I just want to start by thanking all of you for being the board members and the teachers these are trying to find all around. And we've heard many testaments to what an amazing place South Burlington is, and how great our teachers are. And I think there are very few of us here that would disagree with that. I look around and I see the faces of teachers that I have loved for many years as after my children. And it genuinely distresses me to be standing here instead of with you. But no matter how good people are and how well they do their jobs, that doesn't exempt any of us from the economic challenges that we all face: layoffs, furloughs, years of wage freezes, and skyrocketing contributions to health care costs. All of us face those. And it disappoints me to hear the idea that if things don't go well tomorrow, that it's because the board isn't prepared and they've walked away, because these are people that I know, just like I know many of you. So I would respectfully request that the association consider, especially comparable to what others in the community are facing, what really is fair and reasonable, and what you may be willing to sign on to. Thank you.
That is all the individuals that we have on the list. Are there any other individuals who do want to make statements? To raise your hand. And if you could say your name for if you'd like.
I'm Jake Stone. I'm a senior at South Burlington High School. I think I speak the app of the most of the student population when I say that we don't really fully understand what this issue is about. We've heard the words insurance, money, and obviously, we know we're not at school, we know our students aren't on the playing fields. But we don't really get, and in the days preceding the strike, our teachers either weren't allowed or didn't want to tell us what was going on, and they didn't want to talk to us about it. And I think that since not a lot of us are getting school and we're not on the playing fields, a lot of growing resentment. And it's imperative that that resentment doesn't continue throughout the rest of the year. And the way for us to not resent our teachers is to communicate. And so I ask that if a student comes up to one of our teachers and we want to know genuinely what's going on, that you please try to communicate as best you can and tell us what your side is, so that we can form our own opinions and we can itself present. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't want to have to do this, because nobody wants to be in this position when our kids are in school and whatever. But I just want, oh, Kathy Sheffield. I don't want this to be an issue of we support our teachers or we don't. All of us here support our teachers. We all love you, we love our coaches, and all those people who go the extra mile, and we know that we couldn't make it without you. But, you know, I spoke with a friend of mine today. He has his own business, and he pays 1,100 bucks into his health care every month. And his deductible is $12,000. $12,000. You know, this is the reality for people who are not in a union. And I don't, I don't know, where does that leave us? You know, it doesn't look so bad, what you're being offered, from that perspective. And I don't want it to be in the press that the community members do not support our teachers, we couldn't send in our kids better prepared, we couldn't appreciate you more, we want you to be the highest paid in the state, just like our board does. We love you. Please, help us out here.
So my name is Mark Gabel, and my biggest concern from the beginning of this, I thought, was the example that was being set between the board and the teachers for our kids. I have a third grader and a kindergarten worker. About dialogue and the lack thereof. And if you don't like the way that we're playing the game, we're going to take our ball and go home. This is not a good message, in my case, to send to elementary students or high school students. And I have the same concern that you do about dialogue. And I've been told by numerous people in the last couple of days, this is not something we're going to talk to the kids about. We can't involve the kids in this. The kids are involved in it. And it was David Young saying, school is canceled indefinitely, don't come back. But nobody had prepared them for that. Nobody had talked to them about that. They had no idea what was going on. And now, everybody, all the parents are trying to run interference. And there's going to be a lot of healing that's going to have to take place, and a lot of trust building. And the consistency that those kids needed, that in the case of kindergarten, it was just starting to be built, has been lost. I never drive down Shelburne Road, and my two kids look out the window and go, oh, there's our teachers! Why? You have to answer that question. And my answer to my kids is, if somebody is doing something, and it's not all right, you have a responsibility. you have a responsibility as an individual to say, "This is not all right." And I don't care who does what. And that's what they will do and will continue to do. And, Mr. Stone, kids have a place in this conversation. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jim Shields. I've been teaching at South Burlington High School for twelve years. I've been an administrator, I've been a teacher in various forms, and I want to echo, I think everyone said about what a great school it is, what a great supportive board and administration, awesome students. I just want to shift the conversation a little bit, because I totally agree with what Mark said. If there's someone, if you see some injustice, stand up to it. And I'd like to refer to the speaker before, I couldn't hear your name. If there's someone in South Burlington who has to pay eleven hundred dollars a month and has a twelve thousand dollar deductible, we're pointing at the teachers as a problem? We said everyone has a little, feels a little pinch these days, right? Not the insurance companies. They're not feeling the pinch. And so I just worry that if we're all going to say, "This is a race to the bottom," to use an educational term that we've heard before, "This is a race to the bottom," guess what, I guess we can't in this country where we have so much wealth and we're one of the richest countries in the world, and we can't figure out healthcare. I don't, the insurance guys right now, guys and gals, are home laughing all the way to the bank that it's the teachers' fault that we have a broken insurance system in this country. So I just want to put that out there. Agree with Mark, when there's injustice, we should talk about it. I feel terrible, I want to find your business person and say, "How can we fight for better healthcare so that everyone has better healthcare?" I just feel bad that the teachers are going to feel bad.
My name is Melissa Baker. I'm a student in the school district. And I told them I was coming to the meeting tonight, and they said, "Great, can you come back with answers?" As I have my oldest who is crying because she feels like her teachers don't care, my middle child who is thinking, "Oh, another day off," then realize that that's the third snow day, and then my youngest, who's nine, who's angry. And how do you explain this to a nine-year-old? So, I hope to go back, and hopefully tomorrow, that we'll have a resolution. But it has been for parents incredibly stressful to try and explain this to them in a thoughtful way, and in a way that engages them to make their own opinions. But I echo, I forget, I mean, Stone, first name? Yeah. And that understanding, and yes, I've read the Fact Finder, and yes, I've read the contracts from the previous year. So, I leave that. Thank you.
My name is Peter Philmore. I have a daughter in sixth grade at Tuttle. She lives in Chamberlain. I have a son who graduated two years ago and is now at a very university that wasn't on the list, but at Ford University in New York. Both my kids have received incredible educations here. We've had all kinds of great opportunities, and we couldn't be happier with these schools and these teachers and what they have done for my kids and our neighbors' kids and everybody. I got to say that over the last couple of weeks, without, I won't call punches, I think the public information provided by the school board and by the teachers has been abysmal. We all, if anyone is on Facebook or Twitter or whatever, the questions and comments flying around what the heck is going on, what is going on, when are we going to know this, when are we going to know that? I understand contractual confidentiality issues and so forth, but I got to say, I personally and I think many others are extremely disappointed. Maybe it's the board, maybe it's the administration, maybe it's the teachers, it's probably everyone. But the lack of information that was forthcoming to the community as things kind of came to what I kind of assumed was going to happen was very, very poor. And I think that is something you need to think very seriously about going forward, because it just riles up people's sense of what's going on, it's an unknown, they get angry, they get emotional, as somebody has pointed out. And that's the last thing you need in these circumstances. You need things to remain calm and rational. And also, just to put a more personal point on it, my daughter, up to the very last minute, didn't know whether she could run in the county cross-country championships or not. And a friend of mine, and some of you saw her name in the paper, worked her tail off to try to find out what was possible, on her own time, on her own dime, making literally dozens of calls to dozens of people, to find out that, basically in the end, our children were essentially prohibited or disqualified or something, whatever it was, without any rationale being given by anyone, it was just, "You cannot run, period." And, you know, my dog's a sixth grader, but the eighth graders who were moving on, this was a real, you know, big event for them. So again, I ask you to think about how you're communicating with the community, because if you don't, it's just going to keep riling people up and building anger and emotion. Thank you. Thank you.
I live in South Burlington. Both of my daughters went from kindergarten all the way through high school here. And I strongly support the teachers. And I think that I support them not just because of the great work that they've done in our community and with my own daughter, but also for their willingness to form a union, to support their union, for the solidarity they're demonstrating, and for their willingness to go on strike. This is what's needed in our country to defend the middle class which is under attack. This is what our students need to learn about: how to defend your standard of living when it's under attack. We should be proud of our teachers and support them when they need us, and they need us now. Thank you very much.
My name is Susan Salto, and I have been a resident of South Burlington for thirty-one years. I raised two daughters here. They are products of South Burlington schools, and South Burlington schools did very well by my children. They are both very successful, and I think I can thank a lot of South Burlington teachers for their success. I hope to see our board and our teachers have a fruitful negotiation tomorrow. I hope you go in a room and lock the door and throw the key away until you come to an agreement, and then we can all try to start to heal this community and get back to work and get back to school.
I'm a member of the community. I have to tell you, my father is a retired teacher, not from this area, so I have the utmost respect for teachers. But I also am in the business world, and I have to tell you, I have the utmost respect for this board in that they've got a fiduciary responsibility to me as a community member and as a taxpayer. And it's a two-way street. It is such a two-way street. I'm sorry that, yes, the insurance companies are screwing everybody, including myself, but you know what? I have to pay. And I, my insurance has changed this year, and I have to pay. And I don't know anybody else in the business world, but if you don't like the terms, guess what? Get out. And that's, I'm sorry, but that's the world I live in. And I wholeheartedly support you guys, but at the same time, they've got a big responsibility and a big community that stands behind them, they have to answer to. And I applaud you for your volunteering and the time that you take. And I'm really sorry that people think that you keep walking away, because you have to stand up and look at both sides of it. So I don't think the board is doing anything like walking away and taking this lightly.
I'll be right back to you.
My name is Betsy McLean, and I have two students that are in high school.
Can you repeat your name again? I'm sorry.
Oh, my name? Betsy McLean.
Thank you.
Two students that are in high school, and I just wanted to circle that to all of these student athletes that are here, and kind of put the attention back on them. I would ask the board as a community member, that no matter what happens, that they reinstate the student athletes and give them the opportunity to compete. We all know when the strike is over, that the kids will make up their classes, but they can come back this summer for the soccer playoffs and the field hockey playoffs and the cross-country championships. They can't make that up. So I would implore the school board to not hold the kids hostage, who worked so, so hard and have showed up in such great numbers and have the courage to speak out, to not hold them hostage to this process.
Thank you, Mrs. McLean. And actually, I'm going to have Mr. Young here address that and address your comments earlier, Sarah. And just by way of real quick background, we understand that there are co- curricular type activities that can't be rescheduled and could be missed through this work stoppage. That's opposed to the academics, which we find, obviously, the key thing that we do as a school, but academics and sports are both important. But academics, we're going to make sure that the minimum one hundred and seventy-five days are served in the school. So it's a matter of academics and, Mr. Young, we've not been ignoring that, we have been trying to look into some way around this. So, David, if you want to share anything?
Sure. Again, I'm happy to see folks here tonight. I know this is a very stressful event evening. I have, in many ways, tried to provide opportunity to bring this to closure. I'm very sensitive to students and student athletes, and I've been working diligently around figuring out an opportunity. And as Mr. Lallone said, academically, you know, we're required by law to get one hundred and seventy-five days in, of which we absolutely want to make sure happens, and I think we stand together in that as teachers and administrators and school board. What I'm always concerned about, as he said, is around the student athletes and our programs that run. And those events that are coming to closure won't be able to be rescheduled. I did extend an offer, an extension, to one of the co-presidents, and asked if we could consider having the coaches and some of those program directors continue that, and again, was told no. And I'll continue to work on looking at ways in which we can make some of those things happen. But I wanted to be clear that I'm very sensitive to the student athletes that are on our playing fields and probably won't be able to make up those last moments. So I will continue to work on looking at opportunities to make that happen.
They're co-presidents.
Well, we have two co-presidents, Mr. Wise and Ms. Beoley.
Wise.
I was told by Bob Johnson at the VPA that it was a school board decision. It's a local decision. I spoke to him about that.
Again, I, again, as I said earlier, I'm thinking about ways in which we can, again, I think we want resolve of the entire piece. I'm sensitive to the things that cannot be made up, and thinking broadly about options, and that was one of the extensions. And again, we'll continue to look at options. Thank you, Ms. Beoley.
I'm Kathy Beoley, co- community association, South Burlington resident for thirty-five years, teacher at Chamberlain School, actually, a teacher in all three elementary schools over my, the course of my career, so I wear a lot of hats. I wanted to speak to the issue of teachers not speaking to students and not including them in this, because I really want the community to understand that it really is out of the utmost respect that we have not done that. If we were to look just at this evening, when Mr. Lallone began the meeting, I sat and listened to what he was saying, thinking, "Wow, if we were to tell the chronology of this event, it would sound very, very different from what Mr. Lallone was saying." So, you know, if anything is apparent tonight, it's that two sides can have very different points of view and feel passionately about those points of view. And for us as teachers to engage students in a discussion of this, what would you have us say? Would you have us present? Can I finish? I'd like to finish. You know, I mean, we could present it, we could present our point of view, we could then try to present the board's point of view, but I would suggest that if you were to try to present our point of view, you probably might not do a very good job of it, and I might not do a very good job of presenting yours. So my point is that it's a thoughtful discussion and a thoughtful decision to not include students in those discussions. If you want to explain to your children at home your point of view on this, then I think that's entirely appropriate. But I really feel that we would get a lot of feedback from members of the community if we started to have those discussions with your children.
Mr. Gabel, you can, I will come around to you, I've got two other. I apologize. Thank you, Mrs. Beoley.
Hi, Danielle Bute. I was just curious, if we're willing to participate in our sports and have the clearance to play in a game, are we allowed to do so without a coach present?
No.
So if we were to have an alternative person who were represented as our coach for the game, why is that not allowed?
Do parents volunteer?
Yes, that is allowed.
Yes.
Hold on, let her finish.
If we're dedicated and willing to finish our sport and we've been working all year, it's not really fair for you to stop us now. We have more games to play, and we have the rest of our season to finish, so if there is one or two ways to get around this and to let us play, why not?
Danielle, you bring up a good point. And again, as I said earlier, I want to look at all those, we're going to keep looking at options, and you need to know that we're working on it every day. And I'm committed to that. I know how important this is to the students, and that's why we're all here, because we care, and I want you to know that, and we're going to keep working at it. I want to also be clear about, I want to make sure that we are doing the right things. And coaches who've been with you all year play an important role, and I would like nothing more than having them with you. And again, I'm very, very sensitive to that. But let me just end by saying, we're going to, I'm going to continue to look at all options where I can make sure that those of you who are coming to culminating end-of-the-year activities that are important, that we figure that out.
Very quickly, they're coming to an end.
We know that.
Keep that in mind.
I'm absolutely aware of that.
She's back here?
Yeah. My name is Thomas Mac. I'm just wondering, we all showed up tonight to try and get answered, and is there anything else that we can do? Because we're slowly, our teams are slowly running out of time. And I think what we all want, you guys all have their own issues, but we all need to find a way to get our issue answered, and we're wondering if there's anything that we can do outside of this meeting to try and help get the process done faster.
First of all, I want to say I'm proud of the students for being here, and you advocating for yourself, that's a really, really important attribute that I think is being demonstrated here tonight. I want to leave you with this, and I'm going to repeat it again. I'm looking at all options around how to bring this, you know.
But there's nothing that we can do to help.
I think what you're doing right here tonight, and expressing yourselves as you have, and biting your numbers, and I know you're supported by many others, it certainly appears, as you've commented, allow us the opportunity, allow me the opportunity to look at all options. Thank you, Helen. And Mrs.?
My name is Kelly.
My name is Kelly Newton. I have three children, two in middle school and a high school. And without getting into all my feelings on this subject, I do respect and appreciate all that our teachers do for our children and our community. I respect our board and our volunteers here and all the time and effort that you've been putting into this issue and every other issue before you. I want to just quickly address the students and having been a former coach at the high school and currently a middle school coach this year, this has been on my mind as it is all of these current student athletes. And I have spoken to many parents and other people who are not in the union, who have been currently coaching, who are willing to step up and do what's necessary for these students to be able to continue their seasons. I know there must be a huge liability issue and I know that if we work together, we can find enough people that have already filled out all those lovely forms that we all have to fill out so that we can volunteer in our district. So if that is at all of help in your decision, there are enough of us that can work to make that happen quickly. So I just.
I'm Steve Webster and I've been a teacher in the district for about 16 years. And I just want to remind us that it's not reasonable to try to simplify this down into an either/or situation. Either we have good healthcare or we have moderate teacher salary increases. What we need to do is look at the fact-finder's report, that's what the teachers are asking for. The fact-finder's report comes up with a neutral plan that meets the best needs of the community in respect of everyone. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to apologize because I know when I appeared, I was ready. And thank you for calling down there. So, but I am not asking you to explain a great detail. You know, what I keep telling my kids is there is no good guys or bad guys in this. There's a bunch of people at this degree and can't seem to come to the table and have a conversation. However, what I feel could have been done was, you know, those elementary kids could have been told, listen, you're not going to be here tomorrow and it's okay because we love you and we care for you and we'll be here when you come back. And you're coming back and your school will be here and your teachers will be here and it's all going to be bigger and better, but you won't be here for a few days. And they weren't warned.
Well, just so you know, I mean, we held out hope that a meeting could have happened Monday night, you know. So we really, when we left school on Monday, we were still hoping that we would not actually walk on Tuesday. So, you know, call us naive or Pollyanna or optimistic, but I know that's what I am, you know, you can all raise your hands if that's what you were thinking, you know, on Monday afternoon, that you were hoping that there would be a hail Mary play, you know, on Monday night and it would pass back to school on Tuesday.
So anyways, I apologize. Thank you.
My name is Cindy Reichardt and I have two students in this awesome district. I wish I brought my sign that said, I've been a taxpayer in this district for 14 years. And I know many of you for that whole period of time have been too. And every single one of those times, I have voted to pay your salaries, your healthcare benefits, your awesome pensions that you're going to get when you retire. I deal in the financial world, I see incomes, I see people's retirement, and I have incredibly difficult conversations with people, just like we're having tonight about finance. I'd like to thank the board for all of their time and their efforts. I know it's not easy being a volunteer in any community, whether it's here, Colchester. When I was a senior, my teachers went on strike and it was devastating. And obviously, you know, it is for the kids, teachers and board members and parents. I would like to understand how many times the negotiation has truly gone back and forth between the teachers and the school board because from what it appears, I mean, there must be a number. So did it go back and forth and then back and forth? That's sort of what I thought I heard. My personal opinion is that is not a lot of negotiation to warrant a teacher's strike. And I applaud you for standing up for what you believe in. I applaud the board for standing up for taxpayers who do struggle every day. Those pre-bates, not everybody gets it. It's expensive living in Vermont. Many people are moving out of state because they cannot afford to live here anymore and pay what we pay for services with not that many people making high salaries in the state. So I'd like to understand better so that we can all have a grasp of how many times has this really been going back and forth? I know you say for 10 months and things like that, but on page, how many back and forths have the teachers seen Mr. Stone and the school board? Because if it's two or three times, that's a lot different than 10 times where that really may honestly warrant a strike. I don't understand that. It's not, it set me straight and all of us so we can have an understanding and the kids can have an understanding of how these negotiations are going. And I thank you for posting stuff on the website. Keep doing that so we are educated and that might have been, you know, something people didn't have enough time to look at today before the meeting, but there is stuff up on the South Burlington District website now. I know I'm taking a while, I apologize. And I just would like to say that in correspondence that I've written to the board, to administrators about the athletics and to the school association, students can't go on strike, our board can't go on strike, our parents can't go on strike, I can't strike on my job. My daughter's still at home doing homework that was assigned during the strike. So they're working and I don't understand why you can't go back to work while you're still working the set. Thank you.
Hi, so my name is Maria Mahar. I'm a senior at South High School and I'm also a captain for the varsity soccer program. And something you said before about how the coaches would like to see us through the end of our season and that's a big deal. I can't speak for my coaches, but I believe that they would like to see us finish no matter what. If that involves a parent stepping up and a captain's coaching, so be it. But I believe that the coaches care about us enough and want to see us finish our seasons, finish our senior seasons and have those memories with our team, that they would do whatever needed to be if they had to stand on sideline and cheer for us that way. I just think that they would want to see us finish in a way that's not sitting on our bus at home. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paul Kutcher. I've lived in South Burlington for 30 years. I can't dispute school system because we never used it. But from what I can understand, this previous person, not the previous one, but this one here who said something about we can't seem to go, but from what I heard a few minutes ago from Mr. Stone and what I tend to be reading in the media is that because the mediators or fact-finders, whoever they were, came up with this so-called proposal that it's cast in stone and therefore they can't move from that. Well, I think that if you're going to be negotiating, you've got to be thinking about that thing not being cast in stone and possibly modified.
Before I come back to somebody who's already talked of, Mr. Webster. Go ahead, Mr. DuGott. DuGott, sorry.
I heard you say, Mr. Young, that the two co-presidents were the ones who are behind the year's student athletes because they might be here and they could just expand on that.
I'd rather not get into that. I think that. Well, again, what I want to be clear about is that I extended that option and made that request. I was told at that point in time, as of today, no. I don't believe that to be probably limiting all other options and I want to be given the opportunity, I think from tonight as well and feedback that we've both received, to be able to go back and have that conversation and look at all available options. So again, that's where I'm at.
Colchester got it done and Bennetton got it done. How come we can't get it done?
I mean, I have no problem responding. You know, the call on co-curriculars, David, was yours. That came from your office. That was your responsibility. It's not our job to call off co-curriculars. We did get a feeler today about, you know, possibly what would it look like? I mean, you know, this can be done in 24 hours. We can have the answer in 24 hours, but you know, we can't start picking apart, you know, a proposal, an agreement in side conversations that happen what if, what if, what if on the telephone? What we need to do is come together tomorrow, sit down at the table, get this done, get the kids back on the field and get the teachers back in the classroom.
I am in the North High School in South Burlington. We love South Burlington and I still have one to get through and I hope you guys get through. I don't think in this community that we love our teachers. They're incredible. They're friends of ours. They're coaches, they're colleagues, they're everything. The school board is wonderful also. We have to get these two parties together, guys. We have it on the front of our building. It says, Building a Proud Tradition. I am not proud right now that our teachers are on strike for the first time in the history of our town. I'm embarrassed by that and I want you guys to come together with these guys and demonstrate to these kids, stop holding them hostage. The strike should end tonight. You get back to the table and decide how these kids can move on with their lives.
Is that an option? Can you get together tonight?
Yes.
Excuse me. It's not happening tonight. We've explained, we have tomorrow at 2:00. We're having a negotiation tomorrow at 2:00. I have explained before that we're not going to let this emergency situation that the board believes could have been avoided to dictate us having a bad outcome for the community's taxpayers. We will meet tomorrow at 2:00. We are continuing to meet as a board later to continue to try to formulate where we are and we will be meeting tomorrow again in advance of that 2:00 meeting. And we need that time to formulate the board's position as well. So it's at 2:00 tomorrow morning.
Okay. When this gets resolved tomorrow, and there's no school currently scheduled for Friday with there being school day Friday?
I'm just going to take a couple more questions because, believe it or not, we have about an hour and a half or so of regular business that we need to deal with and it's getting a little repetitive.
Go ahead, Lallone. I respectfully thank you and the school board and Superintendent David Young for all the hard work that you guys do doing here. Families, I too am a taxpayer since 1998. I'm a father of two children who have gone to this school district. The reason why I moved here was because of this wonderful school district. I've coached many of these wonderful athletes and let me tell you, my heart goes out to you guys. I'm your biggest fan on the football and soccer fields. I come and root for you guys all the time. Your blood, your family, and I love you dearly. Teachers, same. I love you all dearly. I am a teacher since, for 21 years in this school district. I fought hard to get to teach in this school district because it's a proud tradition and it always will be. We'll get these guys on the field tomorrow if we solve this riddle. Let's work together. Let's get it done. God bless you.
Steve Webster. Just like I suggested, this is a wonderful opportunity for you to model how you can use technology effectively.
Mr. Webster.
You can beam Elizabeth in, you can have a very extensive meeting. You could go all night. I'm perfectly willing to stay up all night and help make sure the technical parts work. I think you have the option. We should have done something with this last Monday, but we didn't. So now we have an opportunity to really put our heart and soul into getting a decision and technology can help us.
Thank you, Mr. Webster.
Senior, I just have a quick question. If and when this gets resolved tomorrow, are we automatically reinstated to play or do we have to wait for the court?
Once it gets resolved, you know, we obviously, you know, there's rescheduling and things of that nature, but we, as soon as things are resolved, we want to get you back on the playing field and competing in the most appropriate way we can. So absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody. It's been very helpful to have this opportunity to have everybody air different viewpoints and concerns. We will be getting together tomorrow afternoon and we certainly, I certainly hope that we will come to a resolution that's fair to everybody, the teachers, the community and most importantly, the students. So thank you very much. We're going to take a recess. Item on the agenda is amendments to the agenda and there are several and we can talk about whether there should be more. Superintendent's report is struck. Under number 10, the South Burlington High School, University of Vermont partnership, we're going to reschedule. Is the one-to-one initiative just a report?
Yes, and we can, we can provide that to maybe in a quicker fashion. It's in your book.
Right.
Answering questions.
Has anybody had a chance to read the one-to-one initiative? I have not.
So it's your choice on whether, as you said, you want to push those to further discussion?
I think if there are reports, I think we should push them to the next.
I haven't read it either.
I mean, there just hasn't been time.
It's fine.
If there's any of these that is just an oral report, we should take it. Otherwise, we should, we may have a very busy agenda next time we do this, but.
Well, part of them is, you know, they're included in the packet if the board, I mean, if you want us to go, you know, through each one of them, you know, that would be time-consuming for any one. We did want to make sure we provided you with, you know, science scores and our one-to-one initiative work that we've done in the past, kind of our due diligence in that area. And then our ends monitoring is one of our monitoring pieces. So that we probably need to talk more about and we ought to share with the community a little bit about our evidence around one-to-one. So it would be nice to have a little bit of a conversation, I think. of a conversation, I think.
Now?
Um, in the future.
Or do you want to do it next time?
Yeah, but I, in other words, I don't want to let it just go.
No, 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 we can schedule it for the next, uh, meeting.
Yep.
I mean, it's just that we, we, it's still a long night, um, and then we're also gonna get rid of number, so we're all, rid of number 10 entirely and number 13.
Correct.
Uh, so that...
10 entirely, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we've got the reports.
Right, uh, yeah, it's fine, I just...
We'll move that, we just gotta remember we'll move it to the next meeting.
Did you take eight off?
Um, eight, uh, is not off.
Okay.
So, uh, we are on to announcements.
So announcements, I don't...
These actions were not, not urgent.
Say again?
These actions are not urgent, then, two of, two of these items are listed for action.
Uh, the solar landfill net metering agreement, we don't have the information we need to take action, so that's actually why that one's off there, that's the only action item we're taking off right now.
Correct. So back up to announcements, and, uh, I don't have any written announcements for you, I, fair to say, there's a fair amount of activities going on, we're happy to have our student reps here, and that's kind of their, their piece, so perhaps they can share some positive announcements, things that are going on in their lives right now, maybe, that'd be good.
Tell us what you did on your days off.
Um, so first of all, Nerali is our new, um...
Welcome.
Yes, we welcome her.
Welcome Nerali. Um, so I'm really excited to have her here, um, fast forward to last week, um, we had homecoming, um, and so it started out, the week started out with, um, the spirit week, um, and it was a really fun event, I dressed up all day, um, there was like pajama day, there was, um, unity day, wilderness Wednesday was a fun one, um, uh, and then Friday ended with a pep rally, um, and also cowplop, which managed to be fantastic.
Is that because you won?
Uh, I got the cow to come to the school, so I was pretty proud of that, um, and then Nerali continued.
Um, and then Saturday was homecoming, and that was a really fun day, we started off with, um, the homecoming parade, um, and there was a little mishap around, like, where we were building, but, I mean, it worked out, and that was awesome, um, the juniors and the sophomores ended, ended up tying for first at 96 points, the seniors, um, second, or I guess third, kind of, um, at 95 points, and the freshmen in last with like 63 points, but all in all, it was a really, really fun, um, day and, um, event, and then it was tailgating, which I heard was fun, I didn't personally go, but I heard it was really fun, and then, um, the football game, the fireworks were awesome, um, and I know that all the students came out in their rubble blue colors, uh, supporting the team, I mean, we did lose, but, um, we were definitely still really proud of our football team. Um, oh, also, we did really well at the soccer games, um, earlier in the day, um, and then there was the homecoming dance after the football game, and that went really well as well, um, there were so many people that ended up coming, a lot of seniors, which was unexpected, because we do get a lot of freshmen and sophomores, um, and, yeah, so it was just a great day.
Um, also, another thing, um, SLAM, uh, decided to have Community Service Day in the fall as well as the spring, um, unfortunately, that was supposed to be today, so hopefully we are rescheduling that, but, um, I'm really excited for that, because I think that's just another way that we can bring our school together and, um, bond, like, the freshmen and the seniors, um, together, so, that's another thing. That's it.
Thank you very much, thank you, great.
So that also concludes your student report as well, you get all wrapped, all wrapped in together.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very efficient, that's what it is.
Uh, so city-school collaboration?
So again, we, um, we have dates set, um, we have not had a, uh, a meeting since our last meeting, the last school board meeting, that is, um, I think also, I think it's fair to say that there's, uh, the city has received some most recent news and, around their current chair of the council, um, is, um, is gonna resign, resigned from the position, moving away, taking on maybe another responsibility out of state, so we need to figure out who that meeting will happen with, between Kevin Dorn, myself, and Elizabeth Fitzgerald, so we'll be working on that schedule, we still have those times. Um, I, I think the most amount of collaboration we've done has been around the master planning and visioning, which is the next on the agenda, uh, and it is gonna be, um, I'm gonna say, um, I don't think you still have enough information on, around an action, the city has not been able to totally convene for the financial, uh, review of the plan, I think in, um, review of the actual developments of the plan and the expectations of the plan, they're, they're good with, uh, the 50-50 split on the cost is still, again, needs to be discussed with the whole council, and they've had a fair amount of disruption, um, as have we, um, so again, we're trying to button that up, we have, uh, met both, um, Martin and Dan, along with two city councillor, councillors Megan Emery and Pam McKenzie have met.
Helen.
Ellen, Helen, thank you, Helen Reel, uh, from the council, and we did decide on, uh, make some decisions around the task force that will be supporting the master planning and visioning. Um, we're in the process of letting those folks know, um, those that submitted, and we had some additional names in which we also thought would be, uh, that expressed an interest but didn't necessarily fill out the correspondence, so we're in the process of informing them, unfortunately, we're gonna have to forego the tomorrow, um, in part in play because we have a fair amount of, uh, things going on here at the school, uh, so we'll be readjusting the first task force meeting, the task force meeting was to meet with the master planning and visioning, um, Frank Locker, uh, along with the, the, the task force and understanding their charge and outlining kind of objectives, uh, moving forward, so we're in the process of reworking those dates a little bit and getting confirmation from the council around their buy-in, uh, to the, to the amount of money. The board has seen it in the last proposal, there's been a slight modification to the downside of that, a reduction in some of the scoping for one of the, one of the, uh, supporters within the program, and that's COPE, and so we're working that out currently with the city to, to make sure that they're in agreement with that particular part of the program. So, um, that's really all I have, I, I think there's a, a lot of detail in that plan, I would encourage board, and we'll put that back on, um, the agenda, as much as I hate to do that, but I think there needs to be some finality, uh, more finality with the city around, uh, the cost-sharing piece before I have you take action on it without having that balance. Um, so, that's where I'm at.
Excellent. So we're gonna skip ahead to number 11, that's Board Development Policy 2.2, this is the second reading, if I can find that policy.
It actually is by your side, too, uh, 2.2, Martin.
Oh, is it here?
Yeah, I can take that one.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, you did such a great last, uh, time last, absolutely. Want to start with the further though, just so they know the context when we say neglect to?
I'll, I'll start with this at the top, so this is Policy 2.2, Treatment of Staff. With respect to the treatment of paid and volunteer staff, the superintendent shall not cause or allow conditions that are untimely, unfair, undignified, disorganized, or vague. Further, without limiting the scope of the foregoing, of foregoing by this enumeration, the superintendent shall not, and we've added language, number six, neglect to provide meaningful and timely performance evaluations to administrators, teachers, and staff. So adding this, so this is the, um, the second reading, and adding this language, um, when, when David reports out on this, he'll provide evidence in that section, number six.
So are there any comments from the board or from the public regarding?
That change.
This change to the policy? Seeing none, this is the second reading, and I believe we have one more reading scheduled before it becomes, uh, before we have to have an action next time, right?
Correct.
To enact that policy. So we're on number 12, Resolution to Change Section 125 Benefit Plan Year from July 1 to January, January 1 to Comply with Affordable Care Act, and that's an action item?
Yes, and maybe just have John provide you with a little, uh, overview of, of why that is, and, and, uh, answer any questions you have.
Right, the, um, 125 plan we have has historically been along the same lines as, as the fiscal year, but with the Affordable Care Act, both our third-party administrator future planning and VHI Bisbet have recommended that we switch to a six-month, have this be a six-month period, and then go to the calendar year to be fully, or to be compliant with the Affordable Care Act. So it's really, uh, employees this six months have, know that it's a six-month interim period, and, from June, or July 1 until December 31st, and then next year it'll go on the calendar year, and this, this kind of cements that, we practically had to do it earlier, but this, this is a resolution that officially puts it into our plan.
So, John, I think you just said that we're effectively operating this way right now?
Yes, yes, we were recommended by both those.
And does it present any difficulty that we might have personnel changeovers in the mid-year?
Uh, no, um...
So, I mean, people, people don't know that, they, they don't necessarily know they're gonna leave in June, in December or so, when they have to set up this plan, right, so...
That's true, there, there is some, there's a little bit of liability on the part of the employee and, and the district, too.
So somebody leaves, does that administration of whatever's left in their account remain with the district?
Yes, it does, yes.
So they can still draw out of it even if they're not?
They have, it's pretty liberal, they have two and a half months after, um, after the year's up to, to draw on it.
So just help me out with the, I, I decided to leave the district at the end of this academic year.
Right.
And I, but I didn't know that until March, so I had to set this plan up, and I set it up for the whole year, right?
Right.
It takes, if I understand it right, it takes money out throughout the whole year, or I don't pay it all out upfront in the beginning.
Right, it's, it's...
So, I mean, have you worked out the mechanics that, that can work? I mean, it's, it just sounds complicated to me, that's all.
Well, it is, but it's, we have to do it to comply with federal law, so...
I thought you said earlier on, we had, that was recommended that we switch to six months.
It was recommended six-month interim to get to the calendar year, so...
Okay, so we really don't have a choice, you're saying?
We don't have a choice, but we do educate people, we give them the information about, uh, the rules beforehand, so, yeah, it'd be a case where if somebody left employment, they, they might get stuck, on the other hand, if, if they, if they're not drawing a check, we're not, we're not...
They're not taking anything out either.
Taking out either, right.
I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, people, I mean, I mean, section 125 is a, is a payroll deduction option where people can take money, have money taken out of their pay.
Right.
Pre-tax, I'm assuming everybody knows that, and, um, again, part of the guidance as we navigate through the Affordable Care Act compliance, these are some of the things that are coming up, and, uh, the employee, as you know, has the major obligation to determine what those deductions are and how much they want out, so...
I think it's a good thing, I think it's a nice idea and all that kind of stuff, my only problem is, is that the, the way our fiscal year works and the way people...
Oh, yeah.
Is not, if you're continuous for 30 years in it, you might have a six-month problem, okay?
Right.
But if you're forced to leave for some reason or other, or if you come in new...
So does the auditor have a comment on that? No.
To comply.
I mean, just, just to comply?
Right.
Okay.
Um, yes.
So we have no choice?
We, we really don't, um...
Yeah, we have us have a choice, if you wanted to be non-compliant.
Right, 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 all right.
We'll make so, we'll make so note, noted in our monitoring report and evidence that you didn't want to do that, I suppose.
So, so can I take a motion to be not, to not be non-compliant?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, oh, absolutely.
This is related, but not directly related, John, when, when someone separates from employment now...
Yes.
Does Cobra still exist?
Yes.
Or do people go into the exchange?
Cobra exists.
Okay, so that hasn't changed.
There's an 18 months, no.
Okay.
Oh, no, that's right, can I, uh, I'll take a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, change of section 125 Benefit Plan Year from July 1 to Jan, January 1?
So moved.
Second.
And, uh, vote?
Vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes?
Thank you.
Uh, and we move to, uh, skipping 13 to number 14, Schools Out Bus Request for Proposal.
It's also in your packet, and, um...
I did, I did this tonight, yes.
But where is it in the packet?
It's in your packet, uh, no, it's in your...
It's at the place.
Place.
Oh. Okay, good recommendation.
This was the, um, fundraising that Schools Out did in association with Common Roots last summer for a bus to, uh, have, be used primarily by Schools Out for field trips, and, um, um, so we set up some guidelines when they did the field, the fundraising, we gave them an estimate of around $45,000 for the bu, it would cost for a bus, based on past purchases, so that's what Schools Out raised, we did a, this bid process according to state law, like we always do, and we came up with really good bids, it's a 15 to 16 passenger bus, um, and the, the low bid is WC Cressy, and, um, the lowest bid was $43,758. WC Cressy had a, a, the second lowest bid, too, a, a bus that's available now, but, um, it, it's slightly off our specifications, and we are training somebody to drive this now from Schools Out and working with transportation, so it makes sense to order the bus now, get what our specifications were, and, and get the low price.
So the recommendation is to buy the bus for $43,758.
So, John, this is a, this is different than, we're not allowed to, to transport kids in vans?
This is exactly, um, according to state law for a bus.
Okay.
You cannot do, um...
But it's a small bus.
It's a small one, but it is a, legally a school bus.
Okay.
It's not a, not a van or a maxi van or, you know, those things.
Uh, so I, I'll take a motion, uh, related, or to approve the Schools Out Bus Request for Proposal.
I'll make that motion, dig it in.
Is there a second? A second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, are you guys in favor, or?
Aye.
Aye. We have noise behind us here, that's, it's comforting, but it's noisy.
I'll talk louder, I'm sorry, I'll talk louder.
Unfortunately, my hearing aids work better for what's behind than what's in front.
All right, motion passes, uh, moving on to number 15, Protection of Teachers, Article 15.7, and if David could, uh, explain this.
Yep, so, um, in the, uh, as it says here in, in provisions of the teacher's contract, there is a provision in there, as Martin indicated, 15.7, which talks about the ability to protect teachers within the teaching corps, and the reason that this would be, has been deployed or is, was, was added in is that both the SBEA and the, and the administration have the ability to protect teachers, um, with the understanding that sometimes we bring on new staff or new teachers into our programs, and the ability to, um, attract and retain those teachers is sometimes difficult when there's difficult times because of reduction in force, and so it's given the, it's given both parties the option to do exactly that. Um, I, and along with the administrators, you know, again, we had, we have had in the past, and we've had most recently, a discussion about, um, do we want to protect two teachers? First of all, protecting two teachers often creates, um, a situational between schools, um, and, again, we had a, an in-depth conversation, and at this time, I have no recommendation to protect any teacher.
So there's no action?
There's no action.
Okay.
Uh, but it is on here as part of the contract, and I wanted to make sure that you, as a board, are aware of that, and I'm not exercising that option, um, on behalf of the administration, this article, the contract.
Is there any, uh, discussion on that issue? All right, so we can move on to setting the agenda for November 5th, and see how many things we can add on there from, from here, or hopefully subtract.
Yeah.
Do we have to have another reading of 2.2?
Yeah, that's the last one, so we should, it should be, uh, no, it should be warned for an action as well, right?
Correct, mhm.
So that has to be an action item. Uh, is there anything that we can take off of here to make room for the additional reports that we're moving from today?
You know, I, I'm gonna, I just wanna say that I think I, I need to, I need to do some time balancing here, and I don't know that I'm really prepared, because, you know, while I can sit here, this is where I often make a mistake for you, is that, I say, oh, we can move this and that, and I don't necessarily know we've got some pretty significant things that I may need to reprioritize on either financial-related it matters, or certainly feel like master planning is gonna be important to have as an action, otherwise, we're gonna, you know, I'm already into the process, but I, I gotta get affirmation, so I, I would say, given the things that we went, that went away, let me work with central office administration to figure out what we could do in a report, what we can do at board meeting, would be a far better way for me to, to do this next step. Um, I would say if there's things that the board feels you really want to make sure is there, then you, you let me know that, you know, um, I think everything that we've had is probably important to you, how we, how we do it is probably, um, up for discussion.
I guess, I mean, just, my, my two cents worth is that I, I actually think the items that we had on today, uh, trump organizational, organizational structure and strategy and feedback... -trump organizational, organizational structure and strategy and feedback process, though those are both important. I think the other four that we had on schedule for tonight are-
Important.
-trump that. And I think that the, I think the science scores, in all of them, we can read those reports, and I don't know that, there's usually not a bunch of questions about kneecap scores, or some, so I'm not thinking that those are gonna take a ton of time, but I think that's-
We ask questions ahead of time, and then-
Yeah, certainly. I mean, I think as they come out, or as you have them here, you could, you could do that. I do think it's important in some ways. Remember, we have our ATM, we have a lot of people that don't have the information, so just as you heard in some pieces tonight, like, how are your students performing? You know, it, it, it may be something that you wanna, I'm gonna say, three-minute overview from Stuart around, and myself, around, you know, science scores. That may be the best, and then answer any questions that you might have and make that aware, but-
Well, I guess I would just say that those four from today, at least in my view, I asked the rest of the folks-
Yeah, I agree.
-trump those other two organizational structure and feedback process.
Yep.
Push those off more.
I just need to note that I'm gonna miss that meeting as well, so.
The next meeting.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. So, should we move on then to future agenda items? Is there anything to add or to, to put on the agenda? Hearing none. Can we move on, and we'll add another check mark?
Second of night.
All right. Let's consider the minutes, which we may just need a minute to take a quick look at. Starting with the minutes of October 9.
No, the second.
I'm sorry. Is that right? Oh, October, yeah. October 2. Have folks had a chance to read the minutes? Everybody has it? Are there any changes? So, by consensus, the minutes for October 2 are approved. Moving on to the October 9 minutes.
Six.
Six.
All right. All right. There they are. The October 6 minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review these, and are there any comments or changes? Seeing none. Those are approved by consensus. Now, October 9. And has everybody had the chance to read that, and are there any changes? Seeing that there isn't any by consensus, that one's approved as well. And are there any questions on Accounts Payable Orders, number 14? Is not, so we move on, correct?
Correct.
And to number 20, we need to take action on the Accounts Payable Orders check to Howard Center in the amount of $59,623.03, and to check, and a check to Nagley and Chase in the amount of $73,785.03. Are there any questions or issues on those?
That's where the elevator work that's here at the middle school is Nagley and Chase.
Right.
And again, anything over that amount, I need to ask for approval by the board.
So, is this, is this the last payment, or we, how far, much further do we have to go?
We paid about $160,000 in the contracts for $3.80, so we have, the outside work is, is nearing completion. The elevator is on order to be received around Thanksgiving and installed in, in December. So, it's, 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 it's on schedule and, and within budget.
Hey, is there a motion to approve the-
I'll approve the, are they two separate things or one?
It's two.
Do, do we wanna do them separately, or just as, as one item? Well, let's do, let's do it separately.
Okay. There, you have to sign two separately.
Right, yeah. Let's do it separately. Do I have a motion to approve the Accounts Payable Check to Howard Center in the amount of $59,623.03?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nobody's opposed, so that is approved. And then, can I have a motion to approve the check to Nagley and Chase in the amount of $73,785.03?
So, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there like an original one that needs to be signed, or just the one I-
It's in your packet, I believe.
Uh, Martin, yep. All right. We need to do the board, I think we're gonna skip the board self-evaluation tonight. It was too, too different.
No, we're doing it.
Well, all right, we, all right. Do we wanna do the board evaluation?
Yep.
All right. I guess we will do it.
Well, you're the court, don't be handing to me.
Good call. No breaks for you, boy.
You guys did them?
Where?
Good delegation.
Well, that delegation, that's a role.
Stop it. All right. It's great to be in here.
Yeah, and me.
All right.
Not a quality job, but-
Actually, the public can provide feedback, too, if you wish.
Yeah, that's right. We have those. We actually have public here. They can-
Jay, would you like to fill one out?
Oh, thank you.
Feedback?
Board evaluation. Okay, so, on the board self-evaluation, in terms of the meeting, all agrees. Is that right? Oh, no. There's one disagree that the agenda items were prioritized and moved to the parking lot for meetings. Yeah.
Well, nothing was moved from the parking lot.
There's also a comment that Mr. Lallone was an awesome chair.
Oh, it's always pays to have your wife in the audience.
And as far as superintendent feedback, David, there's, let me just make sure I'm saying the right thing here. Oh, there's another. Martin did a great job on the superintendent feedback.
Oh, and apparently, uh-
There's-
More than one.
Did you fill out two forms?
That was me. I, I wrote that down.
There's all agrees. There is a Martin, there's a excellent, oh, wait, sorry. I think you did that. There's a David, thank you for your leadership of the district during this uncertain time, and a David was awesome all week. And there's Kathy Sheffield, I shouldn't say who it is, right? Well, sorry, but she left this, and she left, and it says, board evaluation, awesome, cool, under pressure, unvanquished. I need to look that up. Appreciated, deserving of sleep, good luck tomorrow.
All right. Thank you. So, do I have a motion to adjourn? I'm gonna take a separate motion when we get into the other rooms, go back into executive session. So, just a motion to adjourn, and we are going to be going into executive session.
For the purposes of-
For the purposes of collective bargaining, and we're gonna be going into executive session. But I'm not taking a motion yet, because then we can't say goodbye to everybody. So, motion to adjourn to move into executive session.
So, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.